Good evening. Everybody ready?
It's kind of there.
I'd like to call this Monday, June 5th, 2023 School Committee Business Meeting to Order. Mrs. Yell, could you take the roll, please?
Ms. Gabriens?
I'm here.
Sarah Hall?
Here.
Steve Cole?
Here.
Brian Callahan?
Here.
Julia Walker?
Present.
Bruce Menon?
Here.
Great. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'd like to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Hall.
Good evening, everyone. Is there anyone here for public comment this evening? Yes. Step right up. Yes, at the podium here.
This guy looks familiar.
This guy left a report?
So I think you know you've got two minutes. Go for it.
Name and address, too, just so we know you live in town, okay?
David Honkizer, I live at Two Forests Street in Newburyport. I wanted to come here tonight first and foremost to publicly thank staff at the high school, who I felt this year did a lot of extra work that goes into graduation and college admission process, recommendation letters, application and scholarship advising, senior events, that sort of thing. Just wanted to take the chance to publicly thank those people. I also wanted to make a comment about, you guys are talking about a public comment tonight.
And so I wanted to say that I'm an open-door kind of guy, and I think restricting public
comment in any way is a step backwards. So if we can keep the door open as much as possible, I know sometimes that opens the door to things, but that's what public means. So if we could keep that in consideration. Along those lines, I do think it's important to go back to a topic that I think I've been in Newburyport talking about for nine years now, which is communication. We get endless amounts of emails from all sorts of groups within the community, within the school community, except the school committees. And I think two emails a month telling us what your agenda is and put in the packet, always thought that'd be a step forward, was never able to get it done. I still think it'd be a step forward. Finally, as far as, I know you guys are also talking about things only in the school committee purview, so I'm going to bring up something that falls probably under budgetary, and I know you reinstated the curriculum committee from what I understand, but years ago when we started talking about expanding the foreign language program, one of the goals was AP Spanish.
That is two minutes, but just if you want to wrap up.
Sorry, I really thought I'd beat that. And listening to Assistant Superintendent Apolito's comments this weekend about the seal by literacy, knowing that it is exceptionally hard for seniors to get into upper-level language courses, and that we have yet to offer AP Spanish, which was a goal five, six years ago when we expanded the program, I want to speak in favor of trying to make that happen finally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on to recognitions, Mr. Menon is gonna do a little.
Yeah.
Go for it.
Yeah, I'll go to the podium.
Oh, sure, I'll do that, yep.
Good idea.
Make him go to the podium, too. Can he go to the podium? Yeah, this past Thursday, we've had, it was the 19th Annual Peace Awards at City Hall, and the Peace Awards is sponsored by the Human Rights Committee and Kids as Peacemakers, and it's an award for kids who are demonstrating and modeling the kind of behavior that kind of fits into what we're expecting of them, but go above and beyond. They're allies, they advocate for people who don't have a voice, they are inclusive, they appreciate diversity. So I wanted to read out the names, two kids from each school in the district, and the charter, and make a concession, and then two awards go to adults. So this year, the winners are for the Bres, Brennelys Trifault Lou, she's in grade two, and Cole Wilson, also of grade two, at the Mullen, Kernan Farrell, grade four, Brock Ritter, fifth grade, at the Knott, Zachary Bell, seventh grade, and Juliette Pasqua, grade six, and at the high school, Sasha Leyden and Jasmine Alcatib, and I was told the night of the ceremony that her father had actually been awarded the Peace Award seven years ago. So thank you for giving me the time to do that.
All right.
All right, Superintendent, you're up.
All right. All right, well, first of all, thank you very much. This is a fun time of our meetings where we get to recognize students and staff, but for tonight, we're really dedicating ourselves to our staff and our retirees for this school year. So we'll first start off with Ms. Janice Pollard, an instructional assistant at the Brezlinian for 16 years. Janice has always gone, as they say, as an IA with the flow. You come into school and you don't know where you're going to be, but always a team player, always working hard, and never complains, does what's best for the kids. She's a true professional. Janice is loved by all the children for her nurturing manner. She loves every child that she's worked with through all the years. Janice enjoys dressing up, gets pumped up for the holidays, and she loves to wear Boston sports clothes to help everyone get excited for a team win. You should be wearing more Red Sox shirts. And this is what's really nice about these retirement messages. A lot of the colleagues send us different things to say, but this one really was, really struck us. So, message from one of your colleagues, you've done so much for the kindergarten team, you're a true professional. We will miss seeing you at school and wish you the best of luck in your retirement. We hope that you can go to many games, spend a lot of time with your grandchildren. You deserve a wonderful, relaxing, and enjoyable retirement. Congratulations.
You're the best.
You can take her picture. Yeah, let's take a quick little photo if you want, hold up. Yeah, you get to, yeah, right in the middle. We have the mayor here, so it should be a good picture.
Got him to smile, though, so.
You're up. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Awesome job. Thank you for your service.
You too.
All right, next. I'm just shuffling my papers here. Our next teacher that we would like to congratulate is Ms. Lorna Ramo. She is a grade-five teacher at the Mullen and is retiring after 15 years working in the Newburyport Public Schools. She has always been deeply committed to the students and staff in Newburyport and her colleagues. All agree that Lauren is a teacher that cannot be replaced. Lauren is known for recognizing students as individuals, noting their interests and passions to form connections with them throughout the years. She has attended countless sporting events, recitals, performances over the years to cheer on and show support of her students. The past students speak very highly of Ms. Aramo, describing her as one of their favorite teachers of all time. She is highly respected by her colleagues and leaders at the Mullen and will be greatly missed by all. Congratulations, Ms. Aramo. Awesome job. All right, our next staff member that we'd like to recognize and thank is Ms. Michelle McDougall. She's been a positive light within the high school's math department for the past 27 years. Michelle is patient, dedicated, knowledgeable, and a positive role model for all the students and the community. As a department chair, she always provides excellent support to new members of the department and takes time to know each and one of her colleagues on a personal level. Michelle has a lot of success teaching many different courses at different levels over the years. She has brought learning to life for her students by helping them make real-world connections to math when they're exploring. Michelle is also a past high school recipient of the Mullen Award. Michelle's a loyal team member, who's always willing to work collaboratively towards goals of the department and to the school. In years, you've been with Newburyport Public Schools, you've made a tremendous difference, and you will be missed. Congratulations on your retirement. Thank you. Our last recognition for tonight is Ms. Diana Olet, known as Di to our coworkers. She's been with the district for 28 years and is retiring as a kindergarten teacher at the Brezlinian. Through her career, Di has taught over 600 students here in Newburyport and has been a tireless advocate for the El community, and along with her husband, has helped coordinate the zero, the hero visits with the kindergarten students for over a decade now. She has been a mentor for student teachers, she's served on multiple committees throughout her career, and also serves as a union secretary, and is also a Mullen Award recipient, recipient of elementary schools. Di always shows up at your house with a gift if something was happening in your life that you just needed some cheering up. A note from a parent on her retirements. Every year that goes by, we continue to be thankful for you. From day one, our child's kindergarten class was something special. It's no surprise that most of these kids are still friends. You've paved the way for their success, and I always knew our child was in the best hands. Thank you for being the best teacher and cheerleader. Our family endures you. Happy retirement, Ms. Aramo. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
We'll start with two more. Nope, two more.
We'll take a recess in one minute. We're in good hands, we have some elementary teachers with us. That's pretty good. All right. We have two other retirees that we'd like to recognize who could not be here with us tonight. So Ian Larnert is retiring from the Brezlinian School as a special education teacher after working in the district for 24 years. In that time, she's taught hundreds of students on her caseload as well as hundreds more outside of her caseload. Ian is a well-loved member of the special education team that gives 100% of herself to her students and colleagues every day. She is one of the most dedicated educators in Newburyport. As a colleague, she is an amazing mentor, friend, and team member, always offering a smile and a funny tippet to make us smile and laugh. Colleagues describe Ian as passionate, extremely caring, dedicated educator that will always put students first. She is a mastermind in the art of teaching to read. Her motto, which is refocused, I think, many times when we face challenging situations, is let's just do what's best for students. She is always willing to share wealth and knowledge with fellow special education teachers of her supreme expertise on all matters involving testing, report writing, and specialized instruction. Ian is funny, she can lighten anyone with her wit, she never fails to add humor to make us all feel at ease during tough times. So we wish you the best, Ms. Ian Larnert. And last but not least, who could not also be here with us tonight is Nancy Stanwyne. She has worked in the Newburyport Public Schools 23 years. She has spent many years as a head cook preparing and serving breakfast and lunch to the students at Newburyport High School. Over the many years Nancy has worked for the school, she has really missed a day of work and could always be coming around with a friendly smile and a warm hello to all the students while getting lunch. During her first year of remote learning, Nancy and her staff provided breakfast and lunch to the students at the school as well as remote learners in need of breakfast and lunch. She did this in the same positive way as she handles every single day. We wish Nancy a happy and well-deserved retirement.
Okay, well, now take a brief recess. If you're all set, Mr. Callahan?
I am ready. And I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools, amounting in the aggregate $726,047.55, be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no constraints.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have two sets of minutes to approve this evening. The first is from March 6th, so that was...
Move to approve.
Second?
Are there any corrections to those minutes? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next set, just down here, is from our last meeting, so three weeks ago, May 15th, Mr. Cole was absent. Are there any corrections to those minutes? I do have a couple, but anyone else? Okay. At the beginning, after the Pledge of Allegiance, normally, Ms. Yell, there's a sentence that says, "At this point, the meeting's turned over to Vice Chair Hall." Just that sentence, if you want to insert that. And then, it's near the bottom of page two, one of the policies isn't right. The list of ones that we accepted from that vote where it says BD, it should be BE. I looked, and there is no BD. And then, when you go down further, where we took those one at a time, it says BE. Does that make sense? Okay.
Move to approve with the changes?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Callahan, anything for finance? Want to subcommittee updates?
Yep, we met on Thursday, the 18th. Steve was not able to be there, which was okay. It was quite the rousing meeting, Steve. We talked about fundraising, specifically this time about athletic fundraising, essentially because of, I brought up the baseball fundraiser and what it was intended for, and more than this thing was practice equipment, so we decided that, you know, the fundraising is going to be provide extras, not essentials, want to be able to track expenses. The fundraisers are a better way instead of having a sheet of paper, things like that. And I believe the following week, the superintendent and Phil Littlehill met with the athletic director, but I haven't heard anything about that. Did that meeting actually occur?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So at our next FinCom meeting, I'm sure we'll keep going with that conversation.
Correct.
So we do have one more? We have a June meeting?
Yes, I guess.
Probably next week.
15th? Yes.
Okay. Great. Was there anything else?
That's all.
Thank you. All right, policy, Ms. Walker?
Okay, so we have three policies in front of us tonight for a second reading. Both of these came to us last meeting when we reviewed, we reviewed all the policies for ABC that were in front of the committee for consideration for second reading, and we pulled these three out for some additional suggestions and consideration. So the policies in your pocket tonight, I'll start with BDE, which is subcommittees of the school committee. You'll see the changes in your pocket proposed to the existing policy for BDE. Highlighted in yellow and bold are the additions, and strike-throughs are the, sorry, are the strike-throughs, deletions. The main thing that changed here from last time we reviewed are the, the only thing that changed since the last time we reviewed are the subcommittee descriptions, specifically for finance and for superintendent evaluation. So I believe the finance committee reviewed the version that's in your pocket, as did the superintendent evaluation committee, subcommittee. So I guess, any questions on that before I proceed to the other ones? Or do we want to just consider them one at a time? That's probably better.
I do one at a time.
Yeah. So any questions on that that I can clarify?
Looks good.
Then I would move that we accept the proposed revisions to the BDE policy as presented.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the next policy in your pocket is BEDH, which is public participation at school committee meetings. We provided the current policy, which is the first page with BEDH on it, and then the second page is the MAS C version that we reviewed at subcommittee and also reviewed at our last meeting. There are a couple proposed changes to the MAS C version, and the proposal would be to remove the existing policy and replace it with the MAS C version with those changes. The proposed changes to the MAS C version, and just to remind, MAS C version basically is presented to us based, to be used sort of as a model based on, you know, best practices and what other communities are using and what the state legislation advises and so forth. So the proposed changes are in item one, in the bullets, sorry, the numbered items in item one, to remove the reference to exceeding, I'm sorry, to remove the 15-minute cap. And I should say that all of these recommended changes are from Vice Chair Hall, so if you want to add anything as I go through these, please let me know.
Sure.
And then the other changes for item three, which is to clarify that topics for public comment should be limited to those items within the school committee's scope of authority and ideally will address items on the business meeting agenda, which, you know, that is pretty consistent what we do now. It's a little bit more flexible in terms of not exactly restricting to items on the business agenda, but at least providing that guidance that it should be. So I personally support these, I think they're good changes, but I didn't know if you wanted to add anything more.
Can I just ask, have we had counsel look at this, like the school counsel, like the lawyer?
We have had, we haven't had the school, the school lawyer look at this specifically, but the MAS C staff have, they review it with their attorneys. So it's been, it's gone through a legal review.
So I only bring this up because we have a new city solicitor in Newburyport, so I met with them today, and it came up on the city council side, but, you know, because I think we're putting this part in because this is what the city council tries to do. I know a couple of weeks ago, they had a meeting where there was an item not on the agenda, there was about 12 people that showed up to speak about it, and council president let them, let them, let them address it. So according to the lawyer I talked to today, this wouldn't fly. I guess there was a case this year against South Borrow, or South Borrow was involved, so that's why I just asked that. So I don't know if we should wait to...
No, I think it's a good question. We did ask for clarification, and I think, I think the issue is that there is a little bit of grayness around that. I think this statement, though, is, gives us enough leeway, because we aren't saying that we're only restricted to items on the agenda, we're just saying that it's within the scope of the school committee's authority, so, but, and that ideally, the items on the business agenda would be limited. business agenda would be limited to items on the business agenda. And I think, I appreciate that change from last time. Last time we talked, we talked about limiting it to items on the agenda, and I, and I was a little bit concerned about that as well, but I appreciate the language as it's written, which I think gives us a little bit of leeway, because we're not saying you can't talk about things on the business, that aren't on the business agenda, but ideally, we would encourage that. So we did, we did check with MAS-C, and according to their attorneys, they think this is doable. I'm certainly open to another, you know, if we want to go a different way, or have...
Yeah, no, that's the only thing I'm concerned with. So I mean, if, like I said, I'd probably feel a little bit better about it if our lawyer checked it out.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly, I'm not going to object to that, so if that's what we want to do, I'm open to that suggestion.
And I will say, it is consistent with the City Council's doing right now, but I have a feeling that's going to be looked at at the City Council level, too.
Except that I think, doesn't the City Council specifically say only?
Right, they don't have a scope, right? So it's a little different than the school committee. But I do think we're getting to the point, and we've had a couple of these similar requests, actually, I think, like litigation, possible litigation about First Amendment and things like that, that have come at the city level and the school level. This seems to fall under that. So I think it's just at least worth checking on before we vote something in. That's, that's just my suggestion.
My comment is, I appreciate that the language doesn't restrict to items on the agenda, because I did have concerns about that. I'm still not sure I understand the need for the language here. It's not, it's not restricting, it's still keeping it open, it's saying it's ideally, potentially could, potentially people might be wary of coming for you, it's ideally, am I not going to be allowed to? I'm not sure. But overall, I just don't feel the need to change the language that was in our press policy and the MAS-C policy. There's such, you know, few public comment anyway, that I don't see a problem that we're trying to solve, like, that there isn't a problem that it's inefficient or takes too long, so there isn't a problem that we're solving. You know, I think sometimes the comments aren't something that we can necessarily solve, their issue, but they're stating a factor and opinion, or the gentleman who came earlier today, just to thank the teachers, you know, like, that was a nice thing for him to be able to do, and I understand he can still do that with the language that you've proposed. I'm just not sure, I'm convinced that we need to change the language that has already been proposed. I'd like to weigh in at some point, it can be now, or I don't know if you want to make a motion.
You're running meetings.
Well, if you wanted to have some discussion in the context of the motion, I can do that.
If that's your preference.
I, I, I'm fine either way, really.
Okay, I'll make, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we, and then we can decide how we want to go forward. I'll make the motion that we approve as presented, if, and then if someone wants to second that, we can have further discussion.
Second.
And I'm going to go first, because, yeah, these were my suggestions, thinking about trying to come to some kind of a consensus, based on the differing opinions last time. First off, I just want to address the 15-minutes thing, that just seemed unnecessary. If we had a really contentious or hot-button topic, I would, I would want to give everyone an opportunity to speak and not be concerned about the time, and I hope that that's something we can agree upon, 15 minutes seems awfully short. People who are here to speak should be able to speak, so we could make it a longer unit of time, but it seems simpler to just take that out. So that's that. And then, on number three, I noticed it said, "Topics for Discussion," and right up, you know, just above that, it says, "Public Comment is Not a Discussion, Debate, or Dialogue." So I changed that to "Public Comment." And I appreciate that we've made that statement, that we're not discussing debating, or et cetera. And that's why I keep coming back to the items on the agenda. I don't think we need to require that, and I do want us to be open. I appreciate the spirit of what you're trying to do, with saying that it's just what's within our purview or scope of authority, but at the same time, I do think it's preferable if there's some kind of a conversation ahead of, a conversation, an email, some kind of communication ahead of time, so that we can be more effective and helpful. And that comes back to really communicating and educating the community more about what we do and what we don't do, which is a goal that I have, that I hope we can work on over the summer and our retreat, so that people do know, I think a lot of people don't know what's within our scope of authority. And as that becomes more clear, it will be easier for people to come in and participate. I love people to come in and participate. So I certainly don't want anyone to feel restricted, but I do feel that it's preferable if they have some communication with us in advance of the meeting. That doesn't mean they have to, it just means that it would, it would make it easier for them and for us, if we could all actually have some kind of a dialogue on whatever, whatever it is they want to bring up. So that's, that's my thinking on it. Who would like to weigh in?
I guess my own, as I'm, oh, go ahead, Mr. Cole.
I just wanted to add that there have been times, you know, in my experience on the committee, where there's been an issue that's come up at the school level, maybe apparent with a teacher, apparent with a student, apparent with a policy, and they'll try to go through the chain of command, so to speak, building leader, superintendent, and there has been a few times where they end up coming to a school committee meeting and, you know, expressing their concerns. And I think that's an important option to have, because it also allows us as a committee, and as a school district, to, you know, to collaborate and take some action. So, and it's interesting, you said the word "preferably," right? Because I think a synonym for ideally is preferably, but preferably sometimes has more of a personal connotation, like, "I prefer this, or I don't prefer that." So I think it's important for us as a, I guess, as a school committee, who hopefully is, you know, based on listening and taking action, you know, to have the flexibility needed, and, you know, we've been fortunate in recent years, where we haven't been overwhelmed with public comment, but there has been times where, you know, 45 minutes wasn't enough. So I think whatever we can do to, you know, maintain or encourage people to participate, I think is important.
Yeah, I, I will support this change. It's not what I think we should be doing, but I also will support it.
Thank you.
So as I'm thinking about this, and the mayor's comment, I am thinking, given that this is come up already with the city attorney, I wonder if we should table this for now and get an opinion, to make sure that we all, we don't have to revisit this immediately? Or do you think our opinion, the opinion would be any different if we went to our school council versus...
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, it doesn't, I think our school council would probably be in line with MAS-C.
Yeah.
But if you want, you know, Michelle and Peter Summers to take a look at it, that's, we can do that, whatever, whatever the wishes of the committee.
I guess the other option is just to adopt it, and then if, also have it reviewed, and we have something in place, and if we need to tweak it, we can, and I don't know.
I'm comfortable with that, especially where this is our last meeting of the year.
Okay.
There's, there's time to have any review process before it would go into effect. It's a couple months before we're meeting again. And if I remember the Southborough decision correctly, and we did get some information about that from our attorneys, and that was an issue more of civility, and that you can't require civility, people can get angry and that sort of thing, it wasn't about the content of the remarks, if I understand correctly.
Correct.
And I'm just, I'm remembering it's not being about the content, but more about the tone, and is that what other people recall?
I think there's another case that deals with time.
There's a different case, too? Okay.
Or maybe, I shouldn't be speaking.
Yeah, I mean, what was referred, say, to me, was really specific about...
The time.
About the content?
I don't know, there's some...
Or the topic?
About trying to limit public comment around setting parameters around it, by saying that it has to be on the agenda.
On certain topics.
Yeah.
Well, if people aren't comfortable voting on this now, and want to go for the legal opinion first, I mean, I don't think it really matters at this point. We don't, we don't need to have our policy set until middle of August, so if we want to hold on.
I mean, I won't vote for it, but if you guys all decide to, that's fine, but I think if, we're not meeting anyways, why not just get, have legal look at it?
Yeah.
I mean, I send everything to legal, just because I want to...
If the second would agree, I'm open to modifying my motion to table this until we have additional input from our legal counsel on the, on the requirement related to the agenda.
Sounds like that's best.
I can't remember who's second.
Who was it? Mr. Cole?
So I'll withdraw my second.
Okay.
So the new, the new motion is that we table this for a future meeting, and we get some additional comment from the, from the legal counsel.
Thank you.
I guess we don't have to vote on that.
So we do have one more, right? To look at?
Yes. So the next item in front of you is the CBI. Again, I included the current policy, and then the revised version of the MAS-C version. So these, these are proposed changes, and Mr. Menon provided these proposed changes that are shown in the yellow highlight with the black bold. So I don't know, Mr. Menon, do you want to talk anything more about those proposed changes?
Yeah, I can, I can add. It seems to me that one of the things that we should be doing is setting policy not around people we have, but around the role. So if we have the misfortune at any point to see Mr. Gallagher retire...
That's never happening.
We'll be back to having to evaluate, you know, every year for the first three years. So I thought the statement should be there. And the other things that I added were notes that I had been making, it seemed to me that we should have some parameters and some process for how we do it. And this is essentially how we've been doing superintendent evaluations for a long time. We've never written any of that stuff down, so it seemed like this is the spot to add those.
I'll make a motion to accept CBI and all the new additions.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
I just have a question about the second part, setting up a secure format for gathering the responses, how are we doing that?
What?
How are we going to do a secure way to do it?
We can use, what is the...
Google Forms?
Google Forms.
Those are secure?
Yeah. Yeah, Google Classroom, that's secure.
You want to consult on that?
I would like someone, I mean, I know the reason behind it, but I just, you know, it's, you're sending it from your house, and there's nothing to guarantee that anything is not seen in transit, really, so I don't know if we even put that in there, because we can't guarantee anything, or if it's sitting on someone's personal laptop.
So would you rather that we try to...
I mean, I want it to be secure like everybody else, but I don't, how are we going to set up a secure form of stuff?
Oh, don't look at me.
Yeah.
Would you rather make it secure, or change the language? Which way would you go with that?
I don't know. I don't know, it's the first time I'm seeing it.
Yeah.
I don't know what they will have.
Yeah, I mean, the way to make it secure is to go back to doing it by hand, and then deliver it in a sealed envelope. So that, I think that this system is pretty secure, you know, if you want to talk to somebody about it, that's fine.
Maybe we can talk to our IT people.
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest, that we just have our IT group take a look at it, to make the, it'll probably be like Google Classroom type of thing.
We leave the language in, and just make sure before it's implemented...
Correct.
When you send that.
Okay.
Make sure the superintendent...
And then who has access, and all of that, yeah.
That's all.
I'll just make a quick comment, that according to the FAQs on open meeting law, it is best practice for a third-party individual to collect all the evaluations and summarize them, and then send them all out. I know in the, in the past, a member of the school committee has done that. If there is a third party, that is best practice, they're not required.
Makes sense.
Okay, and I don't believe that's even specified in here.
No, it's not, just make a note of the process.
Having been the school committee person to handle these evaluations, that is quite a burden for a third party to take on. It's a lot of work.
I've been that third party.
I guess I would say, having not gone through this, my impression is it's probably a big burden for the school committee member to do as well, so, you know, I guess, who you decide to put that burden on may be dependent on the individual preference.
Any other comments on the policy? Are we ready to vote, then? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone, we made it through A, B, and C. So next week, we are meeting on Wednesday, and we're going to be starting to review G and H. We've already reviewed preliminarily D and E together, and F, D, E, F. So if anybody, if you're going through the policies, and there's one particular section that you're interested in, you can reach out to me, or come to the meeting. And we do do the consult with Dorothy over Zoom, but you guys are more than welcome to attend the meeting itself, and/or provide any additional comments, so.
So you said that's next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday at 6:00, and we meet in the NOK library.
G and H.
G and H.
Okay.
And also, we will be going back over D, E, and F.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, superintendent's report.
All right, we have some, a lot of good things happening. So as you know, we're hosting our 15th Annual Sailbot Competition. So far, newer members, and also people in the public, so we were the first high school team to ever win this competition. We're competing against Cornell, this year, Cornell, Virginia Tech, Worcester Polytech, University of Pittsburgh, Memorial University of Newfoundland, out of Canada, Newburyport High School, and then we have another high school team this year, out of Palo Alto, California, it's Calaha Jewish High School, is that how you say that?
Do you want to take a look at it?
Yeah. Huge background right there.
Tequila.
What is it?
Tequila Jewish High School.
I thought you said tequila.
Tequila. That's not the Jewish High School, tequila, tequila's a totally different high school.
So Joanne likes this. Seven, one, there.
We never get, we're only 45 minutes into this meeting.
So the good news is, they had their first competition today, which was the fleet race, where they have to go around four different buoys, and Newburyport's team won one of those races. Tomorrow is the technical competition, and then this competition's all week, and I think what we'll do, Michelle, is we'll send the information out to school committee, so throughout the week, if you have time, you can attend, it's at Lake Aditash in Amesbury, that's where the competition is. And we're really excited for our team, so, so that's good news. The other piece that I tried to do, especially for the last meeting, is we had assessment follow-up questions, and I sent you just to talk, everyone, the talking points, instead of going through another PowerPoint presentation that Mr. Callahan loves, but...
Well, at least I got a printed version.
That's right, exactly. So basically, there was some, I think we had some great feedback from the committee members during the night of the assessments, and then Ms. Walker provided additional clarifying questions for us to answer, and I think that's really beneficial, and I had a great opportunity to meet with Ms. Higgins regarding a lot of the potential curriculum, high-quality curriculum that the state is only vetting for a lot of the districts, but also down the road, might be free resources, as we were talking about. So just quickly, I won't read through all of this, we'll also post this on our webpage underneath the assessment presentation. But the process and the assessment tools, as we develop the process, so obviously, we have district leaders, teachers, we work in a collaborative way, we do some educational research utilizing the DESI recommendations. This year, we selected two math programs, I-Ready... This year, we selected two math programs, iReady Math and InVision's Math. We had two teams piloting those for the past couple months. And then recommendations from teachers and feedback, then we, you know, do our selection process. So we follow that type of process for all new curriculum. And that's just highlighted underneath that bullet. The next question was, are assessment tools used separate from the curriculum that we use or are they typically part of the package? It's kind of both. You know, we also have a lot of the resources and curriculum tools from some of the programming that we adopt. But also, we, you know, I've been talking about our skills-based instruction, the work we've done with Billy Donigan. So there's a lot of formative assessments and summatives off of the standards. That's where we talk about the PLCs, collaborative teaching time, team time, where the faculty has an opportunity to really look at the assessment tools and then also have the ability to create their own, to tie in. And I kind of list how we follow through with that and how that looks at different levels. Do all assessment tools cost or some available but no cost? So that's kind of both. There's a range of tools available. But as I said, I had a great conversation with Ms. Higgins and it sounds like the Department of Ed or DESI is actually looking not only at the vetting programs for districts, but also, I think, part of the commission's goal is to provide free resources of those programs. So that's going to be good news down the road for districts. And then do some assessment scores measure of higher weight than others in determining benchmarks? So we look for, you know, as we said, with all of our assessment tools, we look for patterns. For example, information from like iReady, MCAS, and Educated Creative Assessment, provide the teacher with a lot of feedback on how well the student's doing. The formative assessment data and that ongoing aspect is really important for the teachers and students, so that's also kind of a mixture of both. And then we talk about tier one to tier three. And then is it, does that process get accelerated when needed? And that's also yes. You know, as part of that data collection and monitoring the student progress, you could follow a typical tier one, two, and three intervention, or if there's a need immediately, you go right to tier three. And that's happened, you know, depending on the student needs that's in front of us. And then do you have a sense of how many families utilize outside tutoring? We don't. We don't collect data on that, but that was something as we discussed going into next year that we might take a look at. And then throughout the data process and also the budget process from school committee members, I think it's just great feedback as, you know, we present the end-of-year data at the beginning. But I think for us, we could provide ongoing data, information, I think, assessment data for our kids. And it may not be a big three-hour presentation, but we could almost, you know, talking to Ms. Furlong and Ms. Appolito, maybe even a newsletter as part of the packet that goes out. So we can all see it and then have a discussion as what we're seeing instead of the bigger presentation. So I think that's been great feedback, you know, throughout the process that we've had. So that's all the information in a four-minute summary for you all. If there's any questions on this follow-up.
Ms. Walker?
I don't have any questions, but I really appreciate the response that you took to provide this additional explanation. I think it will be useful for folks as school committee members, but also members who, parents and folks involved in the school system to know, you know, what the process is. I do, those two last points, I think, having that ability to kind of dig a little deeper into the data so that we're anticipating where we might have issues versus just reporting the raw numbers. And the question about private tutors, I think that's a tough one, but I think the reason that I've asked it and it's come up before is, you know, in a community like Newburyport where we have a lot of families of means and a lot of families that don't have means, it just widens the gap. And I think you don't, if you don't always know that there's outside tutoring happening, your assessments might not actually reflect what the students need. So I think if there's any way we can figure that out a little more, I think it would be helpful and it might help hone in on some of the places that people perceive needs, families perceive needs, even if the assessments aren't showing those needs.
Yeah. Oh, it's great feedback. Thanks. Yep. All right. What's our next item? Oh, technology update. Technology update. So for iPad Air Leash Program, we're excited to share, we have 350 families at the high school right now that are participating in the first year of the leash program. An additional 15 staff members who have also taken advantage of the lease-to-own program. We're also sensing, as we were rolling this out and Mr. Wolf's sending out multiple messages, I think there's been a lot of families that have already purchased, have already had the device and or already purchased it on their own. So part of the feedback when we come into next year is we'll do a technology survey when the kids are all there. So we anticipate those numbers of students utilizing devices with the iPad is probably going to be higher than the 350. But 350 families for the first year have taken advantage of the one-to-one iPad program, which is approximately about 50% of a high school. So that's, I think that's good news and credit, you know, Ms. Furlong and her tech team and all the information, the presentations that we've done over the years. The other piece that we really believe is important is providing the ongoing professional development for staff with this new device that they're going to have. So we're offering a four, three-hour workshop for teachers throughout the summer. A.J. Parks, Apple Professional Learning Instructor, will be running those. Each workshop will be offered two times throughout the summer, July 26th through 27th and then August 15th through the 16th. Some of the topics are going to be iPad 101, so basic use for teaching with the iPad, accessibility and customizing your iPad features to make teaching and learning easier, managing the iPad in the classroom, where they'll have strategies on the use of the technology within the classroom to incorporate the students' iPads in with the teaching, and then supporting student habits and executive functioning aspect with the iPad, where they'd be able to take notes and organize their notes and presentations throughout. So that's also being offered. And then throughout the summer, we also have like PLCs in the sense of some of our teachers that you saw present also offer ongoing training. So we feel like we're in a pretty good position as we roll out the device. The other piece that we've advertised is our tech integrator. So we're in the process of collecting the resumes and as you recall, the tech integrator will manage the student devices, work collaboratively with teachers and students and develop skills in using the device in the classroom. And then, once again, offering all year on professional development and how that works. So I think we're in a good place where we're at for this rollout for next year and we're really excited about it. Yes?
Question. I'm not sure if there's already a way to mitigate this, but is there a concern about students texting through, like, because it's an iPhone connected to the iPad, you can sit there, can they just text via the app?
Yeah, there's, I think what we have built in is, so part of the iPad is the Apple Classroom where teachers can see, can really shut the device down in the sense of make it just for that classroom. So a student would be able to go off of the iPad.
Like messaging app wouldn't work.
Correct.
Just have to go back to their phones.
Yeah, they'll have to use their phones, unfortunately.
I went to the parent presentation for that and they did explain that they would be able to control the devices in the classroom and restrict you to whatever app or whatever is needed for the class.
There's a lot of, I think, checks and balances in there so kids aren't bearing off.
Which is an advantage to just having people bring in their own laptop or device.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then I think there's a certain distance. Once a student leaves the class, then it will switch over. Like, I think it's like 30 feet outside of the classroom. So if a teacher forgot to, like, unlock that piece.
They'll have to get used to that, yeah.
Sounds like my router.
Yeah.
Go to the bedroom.
Yeah, and I think as we, maybe, you know, I was just thinking of this, as we open up for next school year, maybe part of our first meeting is, we could probably talk about, you know, because part of that might be some concerns from parents on that. So maybe we could do a presentation, Ms. Furlong, on some of those safety features that are involved. So I think it would be nice to kick off the year.
Great. I think that would be great. And I think also clarifying what each school's practice is related to personal devices because I know that's present in people's minds because of discussion that had come up recently about iPhone use and so forth.
Yeah.
At the state level. So, or, sorry, not iPhone, phone use, personal phone use at the state level. So, yeah, I know, and I think right now we have, each school has their, each building has their own policy or practice. So I think if we could just reiterate what that is when we do that presentation, that'd be helpful.
That'd be great. Yep. Awesome. All right. Next, school choice. So far, we, throughout the district, we opened up 77 slots and we're at 55 that are filled. So school choice is, once again, very healthy. People want to come to Newburyport Public Schools, so that's the overall of where we're at as of June 1st with school choice.
I'm sorry, do you know what the deadline is?
The deadline, has it passed already or are we still?
The grades 1 through 9, it was May 16th and on June 8th, the grades 10 and 11.
And we haven't received, I don't think we've received additional school choice applications, have we?
Outside of those dates?
Yeah.
We had three and I think two of them changed their minds.
Okay.
The numbers have been down a little bit each day and then suddenly who comes in. There's opening slots still.
Yeah.
Where school is still in session, Sean and the principal will have a discussion and we've been allowing them to submit an application.
Great. And I see that we aren't over the slots on any of the grades, right?
Correct.
So thankfully, not getting into lottery situations.
Yeah, no lotteries at this time. And then we've had, I think, a lot of correspondence about, you know, I think the intention and impact, intention's great in the sense of trying to allow, I think, the school employees, the city employees, this is something that we looked at with our legal team, but I think it's a great idea. But working with Ms. Kat Lyons, our attorney, it just, it opens up, as she said, there's a lot of liability that we would take on as a district behind that because it's not, it's not regulated like school choice is regulated. A regular school choice enrollment is regulated by the state, so we follow those regulations and laws. She feels if you just open up tuition base where either tuition base or employees can just come in, it creates a lot of liability for the district. So she's not recommending that we do that at this time. So I told her that I'd communicate that with the school committee. The other piece that we talked about is school choice at the kindergarten level. And we have not done that before because what ends up happening is many of the Newburyport families may, you know, be at a private school for kindergarten, but when first grade comes in, they all come back. So if you opened up 10 slots or 20 slots at kindergarten and then as those kindergarten students come into first grade and then you have, you know, 30 students that are Newburyport residents, then you kind of, you know what I mean, you may create problems for those slots. So we typically have not opened up school choice for kindergarten for that reason because we typically will get more people coming in or more students coming in at first grade from other private schools and stuff. So those are the two, I think there was two discussions around opening up for kindergarten and then opening it up for people outside of the school choice regulations, so. If there's any further conversation on that.
Mr. Cole?
Just a question. So on the kindergarten situation, is there a date when we as a school district know what our kindergarten numbers are going to be? Because I would think that's important, too.
Yeah, it's usually, if you recall, when I, sometimes when I first got here, we had hire an additional kindergarten teacher over the summer because of those numbers. So kindergarten numbers come in throughout the summer. So even if you had, for this year, if you had low kindergarten numbers and you said, all right, well, we can open up another 10 slots, so to speak, but then that kindergarten class goes to first grade, a lot of times where, again, the Newburyport residents who are at like a private kindergarten, they come in and now you might bump those, you can't really, those numbers are like fluid from kindergarten to first grade. And that's why we open it up for first grade. We have hard numbers.
Okay, so I guess then, when would you know about first grade?
First grade, we would know typically, usually in the springtime.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's when the other outside kindergarten families will say we're coming in the presbyn, usually in the spring or even sometimes earlier than that.
Do you have a date that they have to notify you by?
No, they can always, I mean, residents can always, you know, come into the schools at any time. We usually do the, we reach out to families, usually in the springtime. That's when we get, we have a pretty good understanding what our first grade numbers would be. Usually in the spring, we start, you know, February, March, April, we'll start getting some good numbers of where we're going to be at.
Okay, but it's still pretty fluid, though.
Yeah.
Still pretty fluid, yeah. Okay.
Mayor?
I just had a question. Does school choice limit you? Like, could you open kindergarten seats up just for that one year with the condition that they'd have to have seats open up for those students? So in case you did have a bunch of kids come back, like, that would have to be set first and if we open seats up, then you get to come back the next year, but if we don't, then...
I'd, no, because I think on the school choice. Once you're in, you're in.
I get that part, but I'm just asking, have we looked at, is that possible or is that not allowed in school choice?
So if you did, if you're saying you open up kindergarten.
So you open up five seats for kindergarten.
Okay.
All right, you fill them. The next year, 30 kids come back, they're all in private school. We don't have any openings. But if the person knew that, if we opened those five seats up, they knew that was a possibility.
I don't have to, I mean.
I don't know. They might not want to do it anyways because they might not want to take the risk.
Correct. But I don't, I don't know if once you're in for school choice.
Well, that's what I mean.
If you can move them out.
Yeah.
I mean, they could voluntarily, I guess, move out, but I don't think you could.
You could go back to your home district.
That could get messy, yeah.
Right. So, I mean, it's not, I could run that scenario, but I think it...
I mean, for some families that are trying to get it, it might be worth the risk and just hope that nobody, nobody comes back that year and then, you know, you don't, either you don't open up enough, you know, more seats in grade one or, but I get it, it's difficult.
Yeah, it's, I think from mine, when, just talking with our legal team, anything out of the school choice regulations, it just, I mean, you even get into selection, like, how are you going to select people? You know, what are you going to, you know what I mean? It's out there in the sense of, it just opens up a door of, I guess, legal, legal questions and issues down the road because you're not, you're not following under the legal guidance of school choice stated by the, you know what I'm saying, MGL. You're kind of creating your own, you don't mean your own.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, I just would probably like to have them say that, I guess. You know, not have it be like a, like, separate, like, employees, but just, what if we wanted, what if we did want to open five seats up in kindergarten and make it a one-year tuition? But I guess that's what, that's what.
I mean, I could follow up with that, but I think it's something that we'd probably have to really take a, even a harder look at moving into next year. I don't think you could do it over the, over the summer, but I can definitely, you know, follow back up, but after a few conversations regarding that, it just, I mean, that's what they reported back, that the liability, it creates issues.
Yeah, I mean, I understand your reasoning about the kindergarten, you know, being concerned about a floodgate. I guess I just, I wonder if there's a minimum threshold that we could consider for kindergarten and whether it would even be realistic. and whether it would even be realistic. But, you know, if it's like, I don't know, two slots? I mean, I don't know what's realistic, is it even worth considering school choice for two slots? But would that really push us over the edge if we suddenly had an onslaught of 30 kids the next year? Are those two spots really going to push us, you know? So I guess, I don't, I don't think we need to make a decision, obviously, it's not urgent. I think it's worth having an ongoing conversation about it and maybe, I'm sure you guys have looked at what other school districts have done, but it would be interesting to know if there are examples of what other school districts have done with kindergarten, because it's going to, I think it's going to be an ongoing question that we get and until our housing costs come down in Newburyport and while we still continue to have great schools, I think people are going to want a choice in. And I can see why they'd want to start it, can I get that?
I can, I mean...
So I think, I'm not, and I don't, again, I don't want to create a, you know, I think this is maybe as a school committee, we want to think about how we carry this conversation forward, knowing that it's going to continue to come up. And I also would love to continue to talk about how we can provide options for employees and staff, what available, what potential resources we could, or what potential solutions there are. And I get, I get that the school attorney is reluctant to recommend that, but I also, again, would like to see if there's other examples out there, school districts that have, have done this and how they've done it and whether they have any, you know, what the concerns have been. So, so again, I would like us to at least keep talking about this in some way and I don't know how best to do that, but maybe we could talk about it at the retreat or something because I think it would be helpful to just keep, keep on our radar as a conversation.
Great. Anyone else?
Yeah. Ms. Higgins?
My brief comment was just similarly along those lines. I know the, the numbers, our enrollment numbers have stayed pretty consistent for a decade and so because of that, we can probably anticipate with, you know, a pretty good sense of security what the numbers will be in first grade and they probably fluctuate pretty minimally. And so if you anticipate that's what first grade is going to be and this is what kindergarten is now, you know, we could open up five seats, you know, it's probably not 15, right? You're not going to want to fill four or five kindergarten classrooms, but if you know you're going to have four classrooms at first grade and right now there's three classrooms in kindergarten, you know, maybe there's a couple openings or whatever, but if you can just anticipate, I know what first grade's roughly going to be, can we back into the number, I think it's just worth considering.
I mean, I can, I can look at that if you would like and then, I mean, we don't have to, I mean, I can look at those kindergarten numbers. I do know some of those first grade classes, you know, we had, I think this third grade class that we just had was a, you know, we had eight, you know, we had to hire another teacher that followed that first grade. We're at seven teachers at first grade for this year, but I know, you know, as those numbers come in, it could bring you, to you have to hire another teacher, so. But I can look at those kindergarten numbers and if you want, I can, I think my, I mean, what my opinion would be is I would rather see open up more slots, I guess, at school choice to cover, you know, if it's the employee type of thing, because it's a lot easier to govern underneath school choice and regulations and things like that than it is to try to create.
A special.
Because once you create that special piece, you're not protected by, you know what I mean, like the laws and the regulations and things like that.
It would also have to be reflected in the contract, I think, which means you've got to open the contract back up.
Sorry, Bruce, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Would also probably need to be reflected in the contract with the teachers if that was an option, which means we'd have to open the contract back up.
Yeah, and I was, when we have this conversation again, I mean, that's the example I know of, is that it's in the contract with the teachers. And so I agree, maybe it's not worth talking about until that, such a time as, as that's...
But I can, if you would like, if the school committee would like, I can go back and look at kindergarten numbers and then take a look at that and see, you know, if it's small amount, but that, you know, we do have interest in kindergarten, so there could be a lottery for that too. So there would be no guarantee for, but I can definitely look at that if you want me to and I could report back.
I think it would be useful. I know we are getting public comment on it and, you know, especially the teaching force, you know, we have a lot of retirees lately and the teaching force is getting younger and they're going to have children that are kindergarten age and it makes, you know, the work-life balance so much easier if their child can come in in kindergarten. I know that means a lot to some of the teachers, so if it is even a lottery just to get a couple of them, it would, I'm sure it would be appreciated.
Yeah. Back to the drawing board, kindergarten numbers.
Thank you for looking into it.
Okay, not a problem.
Aldon?
Let me see. I think I, am I? Kindergarten, school choice. Yep, I think that's my report and just, oh, we're going to do new business in a minute. All right, okay, that's my superintendent's report, yes.
All right, do we have any new business? I have a couple items.
Perfect.
Okay. So at this point, I think it makes sense to go ahead and cancel the business meeting scheduled for June 20th unless anyone has any concerns. That's where the city council has scheduled their special meeting for the budget vote that same night and so we could have a short meeting, but I don't think that there's anything pressing, so if everyone's comfortable, we don't need to vote, just need to kind of be on the same page. Are there any concerns about canceling that meeting? I'll see you all at City Hall. So you can go ahead with that, Ms. Yell. Thank you. And then the other thing was just, just a reminder that we'll be meeting again on, our next meeting is August 7th, which is our, our school committee retreat from 4 to 8. Obviously, details will be forthcoming, but please send along any potential agenda items to me. No rush on that, I'll send out reminders to let you all know, but I'm looking to keep it pretty discussion-based. We were, last summer, for those of us who were there, it was presentation-heavy and the presentations were great, but we didn't really get to some of our discussion items. I want to really focus on school committee goals and communication with the community. Yeah, so just, just let me know. Shoot me an email if you have some thoughts for that. Did you have something for new business?
Yeah, I would just, just do a little recognition for Mr. Wolf and his team over the weekend, you know, 48 hours, a lot, a tough decision regarding graduation. You know, he was there, I would say, you know, 17 hours a day trying to figure things out and, you know, just credit to him. And what I also want to credit is part of the whole idea for us to go inside and I think it was an amazing graduation. I think, you know, after the graduation on my way out, a lot of parents were really pleased. And I think the other piece is they were so close to the graduates, they got, I think, a lot of great family photos, so I think there was some benefits of it. But without the live streaming, which would, I think, really made the difference for a lot of people. So we didn't have a live stream all the way up until Saturday afternoon and we reached out to Sarah Hayden and, you know, she broke her plans and came down to the school and then she got Seth Graham, who was part of the live streaming piece, like, they weren't live streaming, but Seth and his company came in and their technical expertise, total creative problem-solving there. So by, I would say around 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, we were guaranteed that we could do the live stream, that we had the overflow in the auditorium, we had, so I just want to credit Port Media and Seth and Sarah Hayden for all of their work in short notice to make that happen, that piece. The second piece that was really critical for us to have a successful graduation indoors was the sound. In Seda Schumacher, who we've recognized multiple times here for being an amazing musician, was also running the sound.
He's a sophomore.
Yes, he's a sophomore. So he took total charge, he was there on Saturday, making sure sound was up in the balcony where the glass was and then also sound throughout the auditorium. And he was also playing in the band during the, he's just an amazing kid, you know, he's, as he's playing music, Ms. Furlong's texting him and saying, hey, we need more sound. And I think he was playing the trumpet in one hand and fixing the sound in the other. But just, it was just an amazing rally of people coming together and problem-solving and doing what was best for the kids. And I can't thank them enough for all of their hard work. The other piece is Steve Burcom and the custodian crew, because as Mr. Wolf always does when he gets, you know, feedback from people, he wanted one last shot, you know, is there an opportunity to go outside? So the custodian crew, Steve Burcom and Mr. Wolf, were Sunday morning at 5:00 a.m. at the school, looking at the weather to make that decision because we had to set up the field, the gym, call it field, the gym by 5:30 in the morning. So that whole crew was there and, you know, it was just amazing. And I think that, you know, as we move forward into the future here and planning for next year, you know, this was the first graduation indoors, I think, and I think it was a success and they pulled it off in a 12-hour period. So, and poor Mr. Wolf because I'm sure he, you know, his son was graduating also Swampscott High School and I'm sure there was parties and things like that, you know, for Saturday and Sunday and he was pretty much at that school all day long trying to figure it out and do what's best for the kids. So it's a great, kudos to him, the team, Steve, and the Newburyport community for really rallying and pulling this off. And as I said, after the graduation, we received a lot of positive feedback and the speeches of the kids, it was just a wonderful day and once again how we all rallied together during some adversity and we pulled it off, so.
Very impressive, yes.
I would just add to that, that I thought that the band was wonderful, that the school band was wonderful and that, it was, it was great. And it, it made me sort of really hopeful that as we begin to sort of backfill arts, you know, at the middle school, at the high school, that there's so much talent out there and so much opportunity. So I thought that was great.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you for bringing that up. Any other new business?
I don't have any new business, but the agenda says something about SISL. I don't think we have any more meetings for SISL scheduled this year, so I just wanted to correct that. We don't have a meeting tomorrow.
I don't know.
No, we don't.
Yeah, I don't think so.
The last meeting was, was in May.
Oh, okay. Anything else? All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.